This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Members present Doug Roberts, Joe Hall, Bob Shabbitt, Lori Sempravon, and myself. Item D, new business. Number one, Z dash 20 dash 30, special permit for home occupation. Section 11.01.02, 54 Baxter Road. Owner applicant Allison Laprid to be scheduled for a hearing.
Okay, so this is just for receipt. We're not doing anything with it. It's, as you know, there's two sections of the regulations. One requires home occupations get approved by staff. The other requires home occupations come to the commission. So it's being received at tonight's meeting so we can schedule the public hearing for a future meeting. So there's nothing that needs to happen here unless folks think they can't make the next meeting and we won't have a quorum. But other than that, nothing else we need to do.
Okay, item two, PZ dash 20 dash one, special permit for retail trade. Section 5.04.01.02.19, 11 Phelps Way. Owner BTV Realty of Wellington. Applicant Katie Merrick to be scheduled for hearing as well.
Yep, same as the one before. I think probably by now, most people know that the plaza was purchased at the end of last year. The owners have been working on getting their application together and all the necessary documents. So we've got a site plan and everything that we need. So they will be coming before you. Again, our regs require a public hearing so that they can occupy the portion of the plaza that they intend to sort of reutilize or occupy again. So it'll be received tonight and then we'll schedule the public hearing for, depending on how we can get it, either this coming, the next meeting, or two meetings from now.
Okay. E, unfinished business. All right, before we get rolling, you know, I understand that staff had a discussion with the state. Can you outline what the discussions were, Mike?
Sure. So I had a couple of phone calls from different folks at the state. I had received an email last week from Kevin Sullivan, and we spoke on the phone. And this week I spoke to a gentleman by the name of Ray Fregon. And if you give me one second, I will tell you where he works in the state. He is with the Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse in the remediation division. And they basically, both of our discussions outlined that their offices respectively have been called and that they had received calls from people in the area about concerns related to groundwater. And I don't pretend to know everything, all the details related to sampling and testing and what water results mean and don't mean. But both Ray and Kevin, the conversations were the same in that as of right now, there's no data that they are using to take some kind of action. They don't have results that they are saying, okay, there's these big issues and they need to do something with it. They're not formally a part of this process and they understand that. They have the power to do things on their own. If they identify there's a problem, they have the legal authority to make anybody, whether it be in Wellington or elsewhere, take measures related to what they think needs to be done to fix those issues. And they understand that our authority as Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission renewing an application for a site that's been in existence before zoning is very limited. And they weren't calling to tell me that they want the town to do something and then outlined what that was. But they wanted to sort of touch base and also sort of tell us that the plans that are submitted by the applicant or anybody don't just get received and shelved. They do get evaluated. The applicant, which I think maybe they'll shake their head, somebody will shake their head and confirm and outline in their presentation, they are required through the various plans to provide water, to provide water test results to the state. And if the state identifies issues within those test results, they have the authority, it will then trigger an inspection and they can look at them and say, okay, what's going on with this? We don't like this number. You need to do this. There's a whole number of actions that get set into motion when a test result gets provided to the state that doesn't look good. So it's not this passive process. So that's what I learned. Again, I spoke to two different folks. They're in two different divisions. So I just wanted to confirm that we have spoken with them and, you know, that at this point in time, they're not in possession of any data that correlates to an issue that they're pointing at and they're not trying to assert themselves into this process.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Just a question, Mike. Does that mean that the state agencies have received chemical test data?
Again, I don't know all the details, but I believe that the long and short of it is there was a call that was made by someone in town. I don't even know where that person lives, who they are, or anything. And the local health district went out and sampled the water. They looked at the test results. I believe those results were provided to the state and they, they found in their assessment that all of the things that were tested still fell within the normal acceptable range for what they would see, which is why they did, which is why the call to me was, we don't have data that's telling us that there's something going on which is causing the state to act in the following ways because the results didn't show that. So I don't want to get any deeper because I don't know it enough. But my understanding was that the sampling was done by Eastern Highlands Health District.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, before we move on to the items, anybody else have any questions for Mike before we move on? Okay.
I think the only other thing I'd say is if anybody on the applicant's side understands that process better or knows anything about it, if when they do their presentation, they could enlighten us so that, because I'm sure I butchered it, that would be helpful. But if you don't, then that's fine.
All right, unfinished business. Item one, Z dash 20 dash 22, site plan application renewal. Section 15.09.03, 180 Talon Turnpike. Owner Holt Mountain LLC. Applicant Diane Becker, continued from the April 21st meeting.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready to hear from us on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I am.
For the record, I'm Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury in the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson. Also, present tonight on behalf of the applicant, the property owner, is Jennifer Buchanan, our professional engineer from Hayley &amp; Aldrich, and John Patton, who is a representative of Becker Construction as well as Holt Mountain. Mr. Chairman, we submitted a number of documents in advance of the meeting in order to respond to some of the questions that were forwarded to us by Mr. Demato after our last session. And I want to take a little bit of time going through those. At the outset, I will say that when Jennifer provides some information, I think it will tie into the information that Mr. Demato just provided to you and perhaps act to assist the commission in understanding the process that has been undertaken. As we indicated at our last session, these are applications made on behalf of the property owners under section 15.13 of the zoning regulations. These are, in particular, the properties on the northerly and southerly sides of Route 74, Talon Turnpike. These are legally existing uses that predate all zoning regulations in the town of Wellington, including the current regulation. I provided you with a summary of what I believe to be the rules and the law that guides this commission in its consideration of the renewal of this permit. It seemed that at our last meeting, there might have been some uncertainty with respect to the commission's operation in that regard. I think Mr. Demano, in his brief report, touched on one of those matters, which is that under the law and under your regulation, you have as a commission, a limited scope of review with respect to a legally existing use that predate zoning. And it is to apply your regulations, which is to determine whether or not the procedures and operation standards that are contained in your regulations are satisfied. We submit that they are. We have no information that would lead us to believe that there is any question that we're not in compliance with the operating requirements for both of these pre-existing mining operations. And we believe that Connecticut law supports us in our position as to the limit of the authority of the commission in terms of its inquiry and in terms of its review. Because we also recognize that a number of commissioners were not on the commission back in 2008, when this particular regulation first came into being. We thought it would be helpful to provide the more complete summary of the excavation operations that are under consideration tonight. And that's why we gave and submitted as part of our documentation tonight, Exhibit A of the documents. And Exhibit A is a document that has been in the Wellington Planning Office files since its original submission in 2008. It outlines the long history of the excavation operations on both sides of Route 74, in addition to the operation on Route 32, and provides, I hope, the commission with a background and understanding and perhaps an appreciation of the fact that these operations have been fully compliant and met all of the expectations and requirements of your regulations since the regulation was adopted over 12 years ago. So that we stand ready to provide the information that we said we would. We're going to provide some information tonight that was developed since the last meeting. And we're going to review some of the questions and provide answers to the commission through the course of our presentation. We have agreed, although there's nothing in your regulation that requires us to, to provide the commission with both a soil management plan and a stormwater management pollution prevention plan. The document, I think, that Jennifer will speak to a little bit when she comes to her part of the presentation, will be the manner in which a stormwater management pollution prevention plan is submitted and what the requirements are for it. This is not a document that is submitted to your commission for approval or review. It's a document we submit for purposes of informing you and demonstrating that we are complying operationally with all that is expected for mining operations such as occurs on the south side of Route 74. The Becker family, Mr. Patton, have readily agreed to provide all of that information to the town without reservation. And we fully expect to continue our relationship with Hayley &amp; Aldrich, which is a nationally recognized engineering firm who will act in supervisory and evaluation capacity to make sure that both the soil management plan and the stormwater management pollution prevention plan continue to be complied with. As indicated in those documents, both of them are referred to as living documents, which means as the operation moves forward and conditions may change, the document will be amended and improved in order to address best management practices for all of these operations, all as is expected under the plans that we've presented. A commissioner at the last meeting referenced a guidance document that had been published in December of 2019. The commissioner didn't submit a copy of that, but just made reference to it in her comments. We've submitted a copy of the full guidance document as Exhibit B to our materials, principally so that it is part of the record. We don't think we should be referring to documents that people can't read and evaluate for themselves. I will point out that our professional engineer, Ms. Buchanan, when asked during the meeting what the relevance or what the application of that document was, she correctly surmised that this is a document that's directed at communities who are about to consider possible large-scale projects under proposal, but not yet in existence. And that's the nature of that guidance document. It helps a community evaluate the potential impact of a proposed operation. We take the position that that really isn't relevant to anything that would be before the commission tonight in terms of the renewal of these permits. We have 50 years of operational experience or more in both sides of Route 74. And there is no indication that any of the concerns that are expressed in that guidance document have not been dealt with and addressed over the terms of the operation of these mining facilities. And if they had been, you've heard from Mr. Demato that if people make inquiries of the appropriate authorities, the matters will be looked into. And this would be the same if there are issues that they can be evaluated. We have 50 years of experience and no indication that there is any impact on any watershed, no indication that there's been any impact on the Willmantic River watershed over the course of those 50 years of operation. I think we're all aware that the Willmantic River is subject to pretty much continuing testing of its quantity and quality on a periodic basis. And if there were an issue that was, came to the knowledge of the people who are responsible for that, certainly that matter would have been addressed. The, another commissioner asked a question about any evidence that either stormwater exiting the site after treatment or groundwater is adversely impacted by potential contaminants that would adversely impact downstream resources. And our short answer is no. There is no such evidence because there have been no such impacts. But to be sure, because we don't expect everybody to take our word for anything, we committed resources through Hayley &amp; Aldrich to do some immediate testing. We're aware that the principal issue that people raise when they consider possible implications of blasted rock and materials, that there is the potential that there can be an increase in the acidity of stormwater runoff. And so Mr. Patton and Ms. Becker commissioned Hayley &amp; Aldrich to immediately undertake some testing in that regard. The results are provided in Exhibit C. So at this point, I'm going to ask our professional engineer, Jen, to walk the commissioners through the process that was undertaken, how it relates to an evaluation that Hayley &amp; Aldrich have done and will continue to do, and perhaps to help everyone understand those test results. Because it's consistent with what Mr. Demato heard from the people that he spoke with in the water resources areas in that all of the testing falls within the appropriate parameters that are provided as guidance by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. With that, Jen, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. I think, Peter, you covered most of it, but I will tell the commission that I visited the site after two storm events actually and collected water samples from both 180 and 171. And we submitted them to a certified laboratory in Connecticut for pH testing, which was something we could do quickly to address the board's concerns during the last meeting and to show some positive information to help alleviate some concerns. And the tests indicate that the pH falls within the range of five to nine, which is what the DEP considers normal for stormwater runoff and for water bodies in eastern Connecticut.
Jen, maybe you could just give everybody a brief explanation of how pH relates to a determination as to acidity?
Sure. I think, well, a pH of seven is considered absolutely neutral. Anything below seven is increasingly acidic, and then anything above seven is increasingly caustic. Something that's below four, say, would be of concern. Your rainwater that falls is typically between four and six. So anything less than four would be something to be concerned about. But as I said, our tests show that we are between the normal range of five to nine. And so there wouldn't be any concern for acid runoff from stormwater at either site.
And briefly, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, what happens to that document?
Like you said, it's a living document. And we do, per the general permit that we follow under the industrial stormwater general permit, will have some other testing that will be conducted twice a year. And that includes some of those other tests that Mr. Demato was referring to before. Tests such as oxygen levels and oil and grease. There's also suspended solids. You can, there's visual inspections, how much sediment might be in the water. Those will be conducted on a regular basis in accordance with the permit and with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, while also maintaining the best management practices that we have on site to minimize any turbidity in the stormwater that's exiting the site.
And we were asked to submit a signed stormwater management pollution prevention plan. And Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that your staff is in receipt of that and that it could be part of the record.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so just for everybody's benefit, the agenda includes a link at the bottom to a shared folder, which was sent to everybody last week, which includes all the attachments that were provided, including the attachments from the last meeting. So it's all there.
The other point that I would make, one commissioner asked why we would take steps to regrade the northern property and not simply leave it in an excavated state. And since before 2008, it has been the plan of Becker Construction that the northerly side of Talon Turnpike, once it is fully excavated, will be utilized as a light industrial park and turned into productive property as excavation is concluded. In order to accomplish that, and that's been a plan that has been made known to the community since before 2008, but it certainly is contained within the document that was submitted in 2008 when the original permits were issued. We have continued to direct our efforts to ultimately creating a productive, light industrial park on the northerly side of the Talon Turnpike. And in order to do that, the property has to be properly graded and made to be ready to accept construction of buildings and roadways. So that's not a new plan. That's a plan that's been ongoing. For me, the longevity of these operations is significant. The amount of material that has been provided for construction projects all over Connecticut for roadways and for bridges and other construction efforts is significant. And that will continue. There's a great deal of material available on both sides of Talon Turnpike that will continue to be excavated. But ultimately, there has to be a plan for these properties. And as early as 2008, in the document we submitted as Exhibit A, you see that Mr. Becker and his daughter Diane and Mr. Patton have a vision for these properties that contemplates ultimately being able to redirect them into a different use, equally as productive and beneficial to the community as the current operations. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think we have addressed at least all of the issues that we were made aware of by Mr. Demato. If we haven't, or there's more information that a commissioner would like, we're happy to try to answer additional questions. And then perhaps when we have all the questions, I could just give a brief, very brief summary of where we stand and what we're asking for. Thank you.
All right, any further questions from any of the commissioners?
Yeah, on either site or just Bob Shabbitt, questions in general? I don't know.
Our presentation really covered both sides of Talon Turnpike. So if it's directed at that, whatever is the pleasure the commission is finding with us.
Yeah, I think he's taking questions for all four of the items.
Okay. I know, I know you've addressed this and the engineer went and took some pH samples. I still feel that pH is only half of the story. pH can certainly tell you the buffering capacity of water, but it doesn't reflect what's dissolved in that water. And I think that needs to be part of the management plan. Otherwise, it's half a cup full or empty, probably empty, without understanding what the chemical leachate is in that water. A few things. Back in the eighties, acid rain was a big deal. And acid rain is any water that falls from between a pH of five and lower. So just to get that into the record. falls from between a pH of 5 and lower. So just to get that into the record, let's see. I guess my other question is, I don't know, to Mike or to the presenters, is there an industrial stormwater permit for each of these sites moving forward?
I don't, that wouldn't be something that we permit through the town, so I'm going to defer to the applicant on that.
Okay. But doesn't DEP require that for industrial sites?
John, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, John Patton, that's, Bob, that's what the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is.
For all four sites?
I'm sorry, did someone else say something?
Yeah, Laurie Semperbonne. That's yours, John, you're saying that that's for all four sites?
That's for the quarry. There's just not enough activity on the other sites to require that. But that's why we're doing the Soil Management Plan on the 171 site.
Right, but don't you do washing on the George Drive site? Isn't that using water to rinse the materials? And doesn't that involve stormwater there?
I'm not sure how it involves stormwater.
I mean, you know, water that, I mean, what happens to the water that you use to wash there?
There's a three-pond system in there. It's a closed-loop system. Laurie, it's a three ponds that the water goes into the first pond, material settles out, goes to this, there's a pipe to go to the second pond, and then there's another pipe that goes to the third pond, and the water gets drawn out of the third pond, back to the washing screen.
So Laurie Semperbonne, again, is there any permit that's required from the state for that system? I'm just trying to understand how these four parcels tie in together.
None that I know of. They've never requested. The only thing that we've had to do was let them know, and this is years past, if any water were taken out of the river. And when this was originally set up, the idea was that water came out of the river, water went back into the river. You know, since then, things have changed. This was back in the 60s. Since then, if things have changed, which is why the ponds are there. So I'm not sure. I have never heard anything that's required as far as like a stormwater industrial permit, because we're not really changing the landscape. What we are doing is taking material, we are taking material from 180 and bringing that down to 9 George Drive for processing. So that's, that's what's going on. So I don't know of any that's done. But, you know, like I said, right now, the only thing that we do is we just draw water from the river every once in a while for makeup water. And there is no discharge into the river.
Bob Shabbitt?
This is Walter Parcell. I have a question for Jennifer Buchanan. Jennifer, what's your thought on what we just discussed, what was just discussed?
I agree with what John said. I'm not aware of any reason that the operations at that site would require the general permit application.
Thank you.
Bob Shabbitt, I guess, Jennifer, I'll ask you this also. John, you can kick in if you'd like also. Any of the suspended solids that settle out in those, either the stormwater pond or your wash ponds, how's that disposed of? Or what do you do with that?
You're talking about the fines that come out of the wash water, Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
About once a year, we'll dig those out of the wash pond. We'll put them into an area just to basically dry. And then after a couple of years of drying, we'll take those and we'll dispose of them up here at 171.
So with any inclination of having Jennifer run some tests on what exactly concentration of any kind of leachate that might accumulate in those fines? Just asking.
I haven't, Bob. The only thing I did ask her to do, because probably along the same lines of what you're thinking, if something shows up, it would show up there because it's a closed-loop system.
Right.
So I asked her to do at least, at the very least, a pH test, because you've got fresh material coming in, it's being wet, and the fines in there will sit in there like a tea bag in the ponds, and just sort of seep until it comes out. And that's where the pH, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, I think the pH there was about, what, 6.6, 6.5? So if there was any sort of, that to me would be kind of a leading indicator if there was going to be an issue, because there's just constantly having fresh material down there that's being processed and washed. That water is just staying there, and basically being lost to evaporation.
Well, again, I guess I fall back on, I think pH is only half of the story. I think that understanding what's contained in the particulate, especially in a closed-loop system when it continues to build up, you know, you can have an awful lot of things in a leachate from a more basic solution, just as well as you can have it from a more acidic solution. I'm, you know, again, I'm just thinking about, you know, that material, as you're saying, you know, being used for fill, and in the reclamation process, I'm imagining. And that's, you know, that's going to be exposed to a certain amount of rainwater over the years and possibly some situation. I don't know. Everybody's claiming that there's nothing to be feared. But again, it's a concern. I'm just bringing it up as food for thought, if nothing else.
Laurie Semperbonne here.
Just one minute, please. Jennifer, maybe you could explain what the Soil Management Plan on the north side contemplates a little bit more. Seems to have been lost in the conversation.
Sure. Yeah, I think I focused on 180. But I'll just say, Jennifer Buchanan here, rock, freshly quarried mined rock is considered clean material per DEP. So regardless of where it would go, there would be no requirement for testing of it. That's just part of the regulations. And then to answer your question from before, Bob, and following up on what we discussed the last meeting, part of the Soil Management Plan that Becker has in place for 171 for receiving material is a suite of testing, chemical testing that has to be completed. And the criteria that the tests need to meet is the residential direct exposure criteria that's set forth in the RSR by DEP, as well as the pollutant mobility criteria, which is the leachate that you're talking about. And those criteria are considered by DEP acceptable, any soil that meets those criteria is acceptable for use in a residential development, someone's backyard, on a playground, can be used in areas where people are drawing well water. So it's a very low level criteria, and everything that comes into 171 meets that criteria.
I would, Bob Shabbitt again, Jennifer, if you would, humor me again, please. So basically, there's, the safety of the material is based solely on pH? It seems like that's what you're telling me?
No, no, there's a whole list of, if you read through the Soil Management Plan, there are two tables that are included in there that a potential person who wants to bring soil to 171 would have to fill out and complete. It includes a whole list of testing, volatile organic compounds, semi-volatiles, total petroleum hydrocarbons, PCBs, you name it, the tests are required. And the tests need to meet a certain criteria that is acceptable per DEP standards for use on residential properties or playgrounds or anywhere, you know, someone could pick it up and dig it, and they would not be harmed by touching that material.
And that, just to be clear, that's the standard that all soil coming onto the site must meet, or it's not accepted?
Including soils that one might say is dirty, I mean, it's clean, sorry.
Yeah. Bob Shabbitt again. So that would mean that any kind of material being brought up from the wash ponds goes through that same testing before it's brought up and allowed to be dumped up on 171? Is that correct?
So far, Bob, that has not been part of the reclamation, but we would normally do it since we know exactly where it's coming from. And I'm just going to say the fact that, you know, you're focusing on this, which is really above and beyond what your regulations are.
I understand.
And, you know, and I look, I have a view of the state pit across the street, and I see the stuff that they dump in there that nobody tests at all.
Yep.
Okay. And I see the stuff and some of my other people around here that receive material that's never tested. So, you know, maybe give us a little bit of credit for actually being proactive, forcing people before we accept anything to have it tested, because there's an expense involved in that on their end. They have the stuff tested. There's an expense on our end to hire halianologists to review those tests. So we do all that stuff, not because anybody's forced us to do it. We do it because this is our property. We want to keep it clean. So I'd like to maybe think that we get a little bit of credit for that.
Oh, and I think you do. I think Jennifer stepped up to do the water testing. And it's, you know, I'm new at this, and, you know, I might be stepping out of bounds in sofar as what we're supposed to be talking about. But, you know, I guess the people in Willington are paying me big bucks to sit here as a volunteer and ask questions.
Yeah, but Bob, we still have to follow the zoning regulations and what's expected. We got to remember that, too.
Right. And I'm
That's our main purview here.
And I'm learning. Thank you, Jennifer.
Laurie Semperbonne here. Just to follow up with that, and again, John, probably a lot of these questions from commissioners are because, you know, we're not experts on this, but, you know, we're tasked to just see what, I mean, we're trying to do the best that we can for the town. There are people who have wells, and I don't know enough about this, and I, you know, so we're asking questions, and maybe we're asking questions in more depth, because, you know, we don't have a lot of background on it. But just, if you could just clarify for me, Jennifer, you said that you tested after two rain events. One of those rain events was 5/100ths of an inch of rain. Is that really considered a rain event? This is just, it popped out of me while I was reading through that. We live in New England, we're in pores, and I just wondered how that, how you determine what a rain event is?
There's no criteria in the permit that says how much rain needs to have occurred before a sample is collected. It just needs to occur twice per year. I did, the first event was the larger event, and I came out with test strip from a pool kit. And we figured those weren't really as reliable as we would have liked them to be, and that a laboratory data report would look better being presented to the board here, and that would show better information.
Okay, Laurie Semperbonne again. Again, just because I think it's part of our concern is, you know, for the people that live within that area and their issues with water. Are you aware of any concerns or complaints by residents about the current operations on any of the four sites as far as water quality or water issues?
Who are you asking that of?
Whoever wants to answer that. I don't know if that would be Mike, maybe?
Well, John, I'll answer, Laurie. John Patton, we've never been notified of any.
And I will follow up with, we, what I said earlier in the meeting is, the state called me to say that they had been called and say that Eastern Highlands had been called, but I have never received a phone call from it. I've received one call from a resident in my time working in Willington regarding this property, and it was a question about property lines and where their property ended related to where there was clearing. And when we showed them the site plan and the rights of ways and everything that was going on, there were no issues. It was just a matter of when they looked out their window, they were seeing something, and they couldn't tell where the property lines were. That is the only call I have ever received about any four of these sites, and that was for 180.
Laurie Semperbonne again. I'm aware of one property that did have the stream behind their house tested for pH, but I don't know if that, you're saying that was not submitted to you, Mike, you haven't seen that?
We don't regulate pH, so I don't have, I mean, Eastern Highlands has an off, works out of the same office as me, so it would be through them, but we've never had anything related to that.
Okay. Laurie Semperbonne, I have another question. Has the sand and gravel operation extended beyond the boundaries of the original permit? Because if you look at an aerial view on the, what's it called, the CR cog parcel view, it seems to indicate, you know, the town zoning says there will be no excavation operations on any premises except that the issuance of the special permit, but it appears that there's been excavation on an adjoining lot that I believe is owned by Diane Becker, but I don't believe it's in the permit. Can somebody address that?
That was excavated at some point in the past. That was shown on the plans in 2008 when we got the initial permit. Those contours have not changed.
So that adjoining property is listed as part of the permit?
It just exists as part of it, because it was, part of it was dug out.
But why isn't that property listed as part of the permit, then?
It's not an active excavation. It was excavated historically, even before 2008.
Thank you. And I know that, Laurie Semperbonne again, I know that you requested an extension of the renewal, and I feel that a one-year permit is appropriate, but I also, I believe our zoning regs state that we would need to have a public hearing to go beyond one year. And that's zoning reg 15.09.03, permanent expiration and renewal. And so I just wanted to ask about that. It says for up to an additional year, but not without a public hearing.
Ken Slater, do you want to weigh in on that, please?
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. Not only, I agree with that, the regulations for the renewal, was noticing that, actually talked to the applicant's attorney about that, noticed that the regulation does provide for a one-year extension, and I think that's what's appropriate under your regulations under this application. I don't know the details in terms of other applications where the extension was granted for a longer period of time, but the way that I read them in the context of this application... period of time, but the way that I read them in the context of this application, I think the appropriate permit period is one year. Um, I'd also like to take a, just a quick moment, because some, some of the questions and answers suggested that there's folks that, you know, are somewhat new to this process, but to give some context to the application, um, the, as, they're a very special use under Connecticut laws and non-conforming use, pre-existing, um, and there's no authority on the part of the commission to stop them from continuing that use, uh, but you can regulate them to make sure that they're following whatever operational standards, and that's what your regulations sta- state, that if there are certain operational requirements, you know, hours of operations, things of that nature, um, and having them come back to report to you that they're doing things that, um, are, you know, within the parameters with them being allowed, that's, that's what your role is, which is different from the role that you'd have if somebody came in and said, "I wanna open up an excavation operation." And there's a whole series of criteria that you would look at for that. So, so this information, a lot of the questions you're asking, I think is valuable for everyone to have a background understanding. I think if deep under what they're doing imposed, um, continue to communicate with them, and we learned during the course of a renewal period that there had to be some changes in the way that the stormwater management had to occur because of the deep's regulation of stormwater, or some other regulatory, uh, environmental regulatory scheme that deep oversees. If that's something that, which you became aware of, that might, you know, change the way that the operations, uh, are, not because of your regulations, because your regulations don't specifically speak to them, but because of the existence of the other regulatory scheme, you can become aware of it, and it can get incorporated in the overall operations. But just to, a, as a parameter of what you're looking at, you're really not looking, you don't, really don't have the right to stop them, um, provided they are following the operational standards of your regulations. So, uh, back to your first part, I, I'm in agreement with the perspective that it's a one-year period of time, um, and I also just wanted to, you know, reiterate the, the limited nature of the authority that you have with respect to a use that pre-exists zoning, uh, and it's important to gather this information and make sure they're following their operational standards, but, um, the public shouldn't have a misunderstanding that you have some authority to simply say, uh, "Stop," because it's an activity that, you know, if had they asked to do it today, you might say, "No, uh, that's not a right that you have under, under Connecticut zoning laws." Very clear under the state statutes related to this, this use, that that's a protection that they have.
Thank you, Ken.
Hi, this is Doug, Doug, oh.
Now, go ahead, Doug. Go ahead, Doug Roberts.
Hi, this is Doug Roberts. I've got some comments on, um, the plan for 171. Um, can I, I'm looking at page 24 with the summary table, just some clarification there. So like, if I look at dichloroethylene, uh, ethane, um, you've got limits for RDEC and then Georgia PMC, and there, the difference is 500,000 to 1,400. So I think what I understand is, um, Becker will test and use the most stringent value, um, as the acceptance criteria. Is that correct?
John, did you wanna answer first? Okay, John, if you can, that's correct. Um, the, the base criteria is the residential direct exposure criteria. That's the first test that you run. If a number that you get from that test reaches a certain value, then you go ahead and you run a second test, the leaching test, and that number needs to be compared to the lesser value. Most of the time, we don't need to run that second test because our numbers are well below the first value.
Okay.
For the numbers that are coming in. Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, and then, as far as the tests that are conducted, there's one of these tests done for every 250 cubic yards up to 1,000 cubic yards. Is that based on some EPA regulation or guideline, or is that just, um, you know, used as a best practice, or, or, or what is the case here?
It's Massachusetts landfills, uh, accept as their daily cover, uh, soils, and they require testing per every 500 yards. So we use 250 to be more conservative than that. Daily cover at a landfill is touching stormwater runoff, so it's got, there's pretty strict regulations for that. Um, it's an industry standard to use one per 500. There's not really a law out there that says use this number or that. So to be more conservative, we went with 250, and then on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis, we may require one per 250 for all of the soil coming in, depending on what we're seeing variability in the data, or we may loosen it if it's to 1 to 500, if the data is consistent and is showing good results.
Okay. Okay. Um, and just a few more, like, some general comments, um, in the document, and I think, um, it may apply to all of them. Um, the, the, the choice of will and shall in the document, um, shall's is, is a better word to use because it, it, uh, is an obligation, whereas will is, you know, I, I hope to do in the future. Um, do you agree with that? Or have you heard this before?
Jennifer Buchanan. Yeah, I, as, uh, I agree. Shall is definitely a stronger word.
Okay.
Uh, where, where they are placed throughout the document, I can't say off the top of my head, but I would have to look, John.
Yeah, there, it's like all throughout the document. Um, if you do a, like, a quick search for shall, and unfortunately, if you do a search, search for will, will, everywhere Willington comes up as well. Um, but, so just a, I guess a general comment there that it would be better if it, if we use shall. Um, on section 2.5 of the 171 document, um, a person responsible for conducting the facility inspections, um, yourself, Jennifer Buchanan, or another designated representative, Ha- Hailey and Aldrich, um, I'm assuming that person that's delegated would also be a professional engineer? Is that, is that correct?
Uh, Jennifer Buchanan again. Uh, I would say they are a professional engineer, or they are an engineer in training, and they are working under the guidance of a professional engineer. So they would have been briefed with the task required of them by a professional engineer before going onsite.
Okay.
And then, once they're there, they speak with the person, the, the P E. Yep.
Okay. Um, and as far as like the roles and responsibilities of the folks operating the Becker, um, operation, so, in the document that I reviewed last week, um, it, it lists people's personal names and, and not so much their role, but like, you've got exhibit D, um, that Mike attached with the minutes, and it's, it's basically has 1.4, the pollution prevention team, and it has a team member name and their role and their responsibility. Um, I think it would be good to include a table like this into your plan, so that there's a direct correlation between, um, individual names and their role, um, at the quarry.
John, do you have a, uh, I, I don't see why we couldn't do that. Uh, the reason it's that way in the stormwater pollution prevention plan is because that's a requirement, uh, in the guidance document that's issued by the state. The soil management plan is, um, is a document that, um, i- it's not required. So we, it's something that we prepared, uh, to be proactive, yep, but-
Okay.
We can consider including names and phone numbers as contact info. Yep.
Okay. Um, 3.11 of the 171 plan, um, it says Becker reserves the right to change the frequency types of chemical testing, detection criterics, et cetera, for any project. Um, but that wouldn't be against the, um, criteria further in the document or against any EPA guidelines, right?
Correct. That's more to, uh, that's with respect to incoming material. If it's observed to be different than what we were told it was supposed to look like, that the Beckers have the right to reject any material coming in that doesn't look consistent, that looks different than what they were told to, it would look like, or if Becker decides to collect a sample on their own independently of the material coming in, and the data comes up different, they can have the person bringing the soil remove that from the site.
Okay.
Kind of giving people warnings. Yep.
Um, a comment on section 4.1, um, second paragraph, I, I think there's an editorial in this first sentence. "The wells will be samples shortly after installation to determine a baseline for background constituents." That doesn't, I, I think I know what you're saying, that you're gonna provide this plan, and eventually there will be wells, um, installed, and then there will be, um, uh, results from those wells that are provided.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so I guess as far as this plan goes, are you estimating a certain time when those wells will be installed, or is there a certain guideline that, um, that should be done? I, I seem to recall when, um, this application was before the commission late last year, um, there, there were plans anyways to have the wells installed and water testing done.
Hey, Doug, it was in our meeting minutes from the last meeting. I asked, uh, that, uh, John Patton stated they hoped them to be drilled and put in this year, and they're, so he said this year.
This year? Okay.
It's in the minutes from last meeting.
Hey, Doug, while you're, John Patton.
Okay.
While you're, while you're looking at it, I just also realize this is new, um, but again, I want to reiterate that this document that you're looking at and reviewing, you're not gonna find in many other places that are doing reclamations. This is something that we did strictly on our own.
Okay.
Ourselves. So it's not something that's been, been required, and, and people don't do it.
Okay.
So, again, I, as I told Bob, I hopefully, you know, we, I want a little credit for doing it.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yep, thanks for that, John. Um, and I was just kinda looking through the document to see if I had any comments, and, um, that's all the comments I had.
Walter?
Yes. Go ahead, Laurie.
Laurie Semperbont. I hate to go back to this, and again, I, I'm just really concerned about the long-term effects, but, Mike, you did not get an email today from a resident about issues with, uh, water? You said you hadn't heard from anyone. Uh, I got an email that I think you were CC'd on today.
Hey, Laurie, I got, I got the email, too. I'm not sure that this is something that can be brought up here. Doug, you, uh, Mike, you wanna comment, and Ken?
So, yeah, I mean, there was an email that was sent by someone in town to all of the, to a number of people, PZC commissioners, um, wetlands commissioners. I was copied, um, through another email address. It did not come to my Willington email address. Um, I'm not sure how. Um, but in the email, uh, it outlines, the person outlines that testing was done by Eastern Highlands.
No, but a UConn, a UConn professor.
Sorry, UConn professor, right, but the, I, I mean, if-
He's on mute.
Mike, you're, you're on mute.
I'm getting a connection issue. Um, the email, they state and acknowledge no clear connection between the property. Um, and, and given that this is a public hearing, and there's no definitive information in that, uh, I don't, again, and that, that email was sent to everybody. Um, but it's not a public hearing, that email's not part of, it's not part of the exhibits. Um-
It certainly hasn't been shared with us, so.
The more important consideration is that it doesn't fit anywhere within your regulatory framework. You're, you know, so, a lot of this, as I said earlier, is, is good information to understand the operations, uh, you know, your stewards in the community, uh, but in terms of looking at what the application is, it's an existing quarry that gets to continue to operate, and it's subject only to your operational standards, and they come back periodically to show that. So, it was a test found that there was some contamination caused. Um, you're not the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Um, so that's, they have sets of regulations. You heard Ms. Buchanan about some of the standards that deep has promulgated about direct exposure and food mobility, et cetera. These are all a very complicated set of regulations that deep has adopted to deal with environmental protection. Um, and that is something that you are not charged with doing. So, uh, I, I agree with Mike's perspective that that's not something that's, that's, that needs to be part of, uh, of this record because it's not, it's not relevant to the application, and it's not something that the applicant had, uh, an opportunity to review in advance.
Thank you.
I just have, Bob Shabbitt, I just have one comment. Uh, I, I'll address this to John. Uh, well, I didn't have a chance to read through the documents, uh, in, in their entirety this week, but, uh, last week or two weeks ago when I read through, John, uh, on page 18, points of, I believe it said points of comment, and, uh, there's a list of all the materials that your aggregate is, uh, used for, and, you know, this is just a comment, take, and please take it that way, but concrete was still listed, uh, in that list, and, uh, I'm, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
On page 18?
Yes.
Is, is this what was given to you, just read, just uploaded this week, or last week?
Uh, no, this, this was the one that I had from, uh, the previous, uh, time. I can't recall exactly. It was points of, I think, comment, when basically, uh, you as the owner was listing, uh, uh, the uses that your aggregate were, was, uh, used for.
Is that the 2008 point, uh, deal, Bob?
It might be. It might be.
It probably is, because I read that, too, but I believe it was in the 2008 when they went for the special permit to begin with. It was talking about what they did, and it had the whole deal about maybe a lot.
Chairman, you're, you're correct. That's the 2008 document that was submitted back then and was provided to the commission for background information for this hearing.
I think we can all agree times have changed since then, so.
Certainly have.
Further questions? One more time. Go ahead, Laurie.
Uh, Laurie Semperbont, I, I just would like to, I, I think that we're all pretty much laypeople, and trying to understand this is very difficult. Um, I think a lot of our questions are trying to make sure we're providing due diligence. I don't think, um, anybody's against, um, allowing a business to do what they're legally allowed to do. I just wanna make sure, you know, I'm concerned about when we go through this permitting again. Is there something that they presented today that is then gonna be grandfathered because we didn't ask about it today? Is everything in this engineering report grandfathered in now if we accept this permit for a year? Is this engineering report part of that permit? And a permanent, permanently inclusive, everything that's in it? Or we accept the permit with this is just information? I guess this is a question for Ken, because I'm just concerned that we, we, there are so many things that are already grandfathered. You know, what are we doing if we extend this permit for one year?
Before Ken speaks, I just wanna make it clear that we've provided these reports to you for informational purposes. They're not submitted to you for any operational or other requirements under your regulation. We submitted-
We submitted those to demonstrate to you that we act as, with best management practices in all of these operations. It's not submitted to you for your approval. That, that's not its purpose. Sorry, Ken, if I stepped on your opportunity to speak.
No, no, not at all. For the most part, I agree with what Attorney Walter just said. The, what is grandfathered is the use itself. And what make you feel better putting your, kind of the pillow tonight is nothing in those documents are going to change the scope of what they're allowed to do. They're allowed to do is framed by what it existed before the existence of the regulations and the standards. So if during the course of the year, there are specific elements of your regulation, specific standards that it's determined that there's been a violation of, Mike has authority as zoning enforcement officer, and you have the authority next time you come up with a permit to hold their feet to the fire to comply with the standards. A big set of documents that are really designed, in fairness to you and to me as well, above our, above our knowledge base in terms of the way that it, you know, the environmental testing is being performed and soil testing, et cetera, et cetera. It is something that's in the file to help you get information, but you're not, you know, if there were, if they made a mistake, for example, in something, some things were picked up tonight, for example, that may have been drafted differently. You're not going to be giving them any legal status by giving them a stack extension simply because they've given you those, all of those documents. It is for informational purposes only. The parameters of what they're allowed to do are those governed by their existence and the standards of your regulation. So, so rest easy if there's some things in there that, that are hard to understand and are things that you might be concerned, you might think you're, you're putting your stamp of approval on, you're not. Those are, those are just documents provided by the applicant to help you understand the operations and understand them only in the context of your standards.
Lori Semperban, one final thing, John, I didn't find any reference to that other piece of property where some previous quarrying, I don't find it on any of the previous permits or any of that. And I just want to make that statement that it doesn't appear to be that other property that's no longer being quarried, that is an abutting property that's owned by Diane Becker. I don't see that on any of the permits, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Walter Parcell. This is directed for Mike and for Attorney Slater. I have the minutes before me here of July 16th. I wasn't present at that particular meeting because I was on vacation. I believe Doug Roberts chaired the meeting at the time. And I'm reading it, there was a motion made to approve the application, this application with the condition, the soil management plan is provided to the commission by March 1st, 2020. Then that motion was seconded, all in favor, motion passes unanimous unanimously. Did they not give us this by March 1st?
They did.
Okay, so wasn't that the condition to approve it?
That was the previous condition, yes.
Okay.
But at the last meeting, didn't they say that they had it submitted before March 1st? We just were delayed in, in having our meeting.
It was submitted on time.
Right, I think one of the suggestions is needed, not more opportunity to review everything, not that it was untimely, if I remember.
That's why we extended to this week because we're going to post the documents because these online meetings, you know, we're still getting used to them. Any further questions?
Just so I can, just because I want to be a little bit picky, I, I see Joe Hall is here. I just want to know, Joe, can you unmute your mic and let us know so I can make sure your connection's good?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, who has their mic on and is talking? Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Joe Hall could hear us.
Yeah, he answered.
Yeah, so I just, I just didn't want him to be trying to unmute and we're not able to get through to him, so I just wanted to make sure. So we're, we're good on my end. The only other, the only thing that I would bring up again, if you guys are going to start discussing this, is just on our end, the last meeting, he did talk about paving the driveway at 180. I did go by, the stakes are out there, the survey stakes for the driveway. So I just want to make sure we incorporate that into your discussions when you consider moving forward with this.
Okay. So no further questions from the commission, so I think it's time to have a discussion about, you know, how we want to proceed tonight. We have these four items before us and, you know, what's the commission's thought about making motions and voting?
I move that we accept the extension of the special permit.
I would second Joe Hall.
All in favor?
Aye, Bob Shabbat.
Aye, Doug Roberts.
Aye, Joe Hall.
Lori, we didn't hear you, I saw your hand up though.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
So I just want to be picky again, we're four separate applications, so we just, I just want to be clear what the commission's talking about for the record. So is, are we talking about all four, talking about one? Can we just, I'm sure the applicant wants that clear too.
Thank you.
Bob, was your intent to, for all four when you made that motion?
Well, they came to us as a group soup, so yeah, all four.
Okay, that was my understanding as well.
And mine, Joe Hall.
And mine.
Probably should have everybody just acknowledged that, so it's clear.
Doug Roberts, I acknowledge.
Walter Parcell, I acknowledge.
Bob Shabbat, I acknowledge. Joe Hall.
I, Lori Semperban, I acknowledge that it's all four.
Joseph Hall, go ahead.
Yes, I acknowledge all four. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item F, minutes from.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Minutes from April.
Thank you.
Okay, item, no, go ahead.
You should have received a revised set of minutes. The first set, I think that went out from, from the office was a rough draft. So there should have been a second copy which was sent today, which was the final draft. So if you're, if you've reviewed those, hopefully you reviewed the right one.
Mike, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Because there was so much material for this meeting, I saw the revised minutes and I noticed that one of the additions was who was attending the meeting? Were there a lot of other substantive changes? Because I read them previously, but I didn't have time to read through the entire.
So we, we had, we made some adjustments to spelling of names. We took out the list of members of the public that attended because we couldn't confirm, because some people only use their first names and that's not something we typically do. There were some other typographical and just sentence structure stuff, but I, I don't believe that there was anything large, if you want to take the time, you can push it to the next meeting.
You had Joe Hall, you had Joe Hall and Joe Lucia reversed.
Yeah.
For member present, member absent, that was corrected in these. I have no problem moving this to the next meeting if people want to do that.
No.
I'm good with it now.
I'm good with it now.
All right, I'm going to make a motion then to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item G, any correspondence, Mike?
No.
Okay. Item H, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Do we have any? Yes, I see someone with their hand up, your name? Your name, please?
Carrie Donaldson, 142 Talon Turnpike.
Yes, go ahead.
I would request, as noted already, in this, this time of learning how to navigate through virtual meetings and logging on and information coming rapidly and perhaps communication not being disseminated as easily as it was before, that in the future, when there is dealings, particularly with the quarry, two things happen, I would ask that a butters be sent a letter being told that there is going to be a discussion. And two, that the format be moved to public hearing rather than a regular commission meeting so that there is greater input from the public.
Attorney Slater, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I do. It, this is not in the nature, public hearings are, a special permit, if someone was going to be asking permission to do something, there's a requirement for a special permit. If someone was going to be making a request to amend the regulations, that's something that is a matter of public hearing. An extension of an existing non-conforming under your existing regulations don't provide for a public hearing. So certainly unless the regulations change, I would suggest that you not hold a public hearing.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Okay, I'm going to hit the unmute button just so then anybody who, and there's a bunch of people that are here, if there's anybody else who has anything to say, I'm going to hit the unmute button. You can remute yourself if you don't have anything to say, but just to cover our bases. Okay.
Any further comments from the public? Okay, thank you. Item I, staff report and discussion. First item, FY 2021 budget update.
So this is on here because at, I forget which previous meeting, Andy Marco had asked that we kind of talk about or have on the, but have on the agenda, the discussion about the budget. Because of the way everything's been rolling with the meetings and how quickly everything has unfolded on the board of finance side, we couldn't time it right so that you guys saw the budget essentially before, although I did send it to Walter. But as I mentioned, we were asked to provide a zero, basically a flat budget and a negative three. And the way that we achieved the negative three was essentially there are two line items that, that the commission has, which I, I see as forward looking. One relates to GIS, it's how we, we get our town maps, it's, we have a GIS website that we use to post information. And if you look in the meeting room downstairs in town hall, all those maps, those are made in GIS. And the other is for zoning regulations, long-term type projects. Those were the two items that were significantly reduced to get us to the negative three. We can't cut costs for public notices, we can't cut, you know, we're going to cut salaries for the staff in the office, we can't cut a lot, most, 80 to 90% of our budget is fixed, non-negotiable. So we, that's what we took that money from. So it will hinder our ability to do some maybe forward thinking, things like zoning reg revisions in the next year, if that budget is what's ultimately adopted by the board of finance, but it, it does not take away any of the existing services that we have for this year that comes out of our office, our permitting system, anything that's online, all the services that we provide, it doesn't impact anything that's going on currently. So I just, I wanted to give the commission a quick update on that. And then really quickly, just because Ken's here and maybe we'll release him, I'm going to go to number three before I go to number two. Something that I wanted to kind of bring up to the commission, and this was one of the reasons why the agenda was revised. As you may have heard, the governor has said that we're going to start the slow roll of reopening things as of May 20th. One of the things he said is that restaurants can reopen if they have outdoor dining or only if they have outdoor dining, they can continue to do takeout, but if they want to have people come and sit, it's got to be outside. That is challenging for every town, including Wellington, because in most cases it requires a special permit to do. If they serve alcohol, that requires approval from liquor control, which would require a public hearing. And notices to a butters, we would have to do referrals to the, to CROG, which requires a 30-day waiting period. That is all stuff that can't happen between now and in May 20th. And our, the town hall has already received calls from local restaurants that are itching to get open and back to normal and wanting to know what they need to do. So we, the discussion tonight, which it, things have evolved a little bit and Ken can, can kind of give you the most recent update, but there's not a lot of regulatory authority that we have to be able to move this process so that we can give restaurants the ability to open under our regulations by May 20th. And so we, the discussion was supposed to be, how do we figure that out? But I think there may be some stuff in the works that the state maybe hopefully that might shortcut some of this for the short term so that these guys can get open. So if Ken has anything to add, I'll defer to him.
Oh yes, I was on a conference call this morning with a group from the executive committee of the planning and zoning section of the bar. And we're working, we worked with them, a couple of guys in my office had been working with them with the earlier executive orders dealing with getting the extensions, 90 days extensions at times on hearings, other elements with virtual meetings. That what's a buzz right now is, is this issue in how can the governor, through an executive order, be able to fast track this? Back on tomorrow morning at a conference call at 8:30, someone was working on a draft executive order. I can't really tell you what it's going to look like because there were a couple of different views at how it could be accomplished. One could be that the governor could basically provide the ability to give an accommodation during this crisis period of time where perhaps the planning and zoning commission or the zoning, planning and zoning commission can authorize staff to simply authorize certain uses that might not otherwise be allowed in regulations, like outdoor dining, without need for a special permit, with possibly without even need of any referral to CROG. It's also possible that it would be a more of a fast track process that you'd have the ability, if you wanted to adopt regulations that would authorize that and be able to do it quicker to try to open things up in time for the 20th. So there's a couple of different alternatives. Frankly, my hope is it gives a lot of latitudes to towns to decide, you know, along the lines of, is what I'm describing as an accommodation so that the existing regulations don't get tinkered with, but you have the ability, because it's such an economic emergency, that as you see fit, you know, provided the health, you know, the health department's satisfied that they have, you know, safe manners of access and egress and, and, you know, all of that is accounted for, that you'd be able to do that without having to go through a formal public hearing process. But stay tuned, we will know more, we're going to prepare something and then that's going to go to the governor's office, but the governor's office is aware that there's things in work, in the works. Because there's another element to it right now, right now, the liquor control, there is no temporary permit that exact fits the COVID-19 scenario. So it would be as if you were going to be giving a permanent, you know, approval of outdoor dining in a facility, in a location that you might be perfectly happy to have that happen right now during this crisis. But it wouldn't be appropriate once everything returned to normalcy. So there has to be an element of the change with the Department of Liquor Control Commission to be able to give a permit where you would, you know, be able to give some kind of more of a temporary permit when that is something that is, is something that you would like to do. So I'll update the commission through Mike. I'll know a little more tomorrow morning. And then we'll be involved with a group that's working with the governor's office to see how you might be able to accommodate your local businesses. Now let's, let's say the governor doesn't do anything and doesn't, you know, doesn't want to be bothered. There's a reality that you probably not a position, you may or may not be in a position to give my guidance on this. But it's also been discussed, you know, sort of the look the other way. Right now there are businesses like Best Buys that are, that are conducting drive-through operations that are not something that was approved as part of their approvals and certainly restaurants where, you know, no drive-through windows are allowed in town, but under the COVID-19 circumstance, people need to eat, the restaurants need to survive. And no one is of course bringing any kind of zoning enforcement action against a business that's, that's, you know, doing this kind of drive-through operation. So it is possible that you're not going to get relief and that you might make a decision. And I, I say, suggest not to really give a whole lot of guidance right now, because I think relief is going to come in the way of the executive order. But if it doesn't, one thing you could, you certainly couldn't change the regulations, follow everything as it exists right now and give someone a permit that, you know, that's not authorized as an administrative permit right now in time to get somebody up and going by May 20th. That just, that just can't happen. So the next, you know, not best thing, but the next thing that you, you could conceivably do would be to simply not take any enforcement action if someone's pulled tables out onto their patio and is serving people there using proper social distancing. But that's a tough decision every community and every zoning enforcement officer is going to have to make if they don't get relief from, in the way of an executive order. So I'm hopeful that there's, there's enough pressure right now from, because states, the state's a buzz from the municipal side of how do we do this to help our businesses? And I'm sure that the restaurants themselves are putting plenty of pressure on the governor's office also. So stay tuned. I wish I could give you more information other than that I think there's going to be good news to come in terms of ways in which you can, can, can help your, your local businesses. But any, any questions or feedback you might give me when I'm back on the line tomorrow morning in terms of, you know, this notion of, of being able to give, given analogy of an accommodation under the, the Americans with Disabilities Act, you don't have to change your regulations to give a person the ability to have a ramp to get into their home in order, under the ADA. So I'm hopeful that what might come out of here is something similar like this is sort of a one-time scenario in which the governor is going to authorize permits that would be issued. And then once the crisis is over, everything goes back to the way it was under the, under your existing regulations. If you have any feedback you want to share with me that I, I would have in back of my mind when I'm talking to people tomorrow morning, I'm all ears.
No, that would, that sounds. Go ahead, Lori.
Sorry, Ken, I just want to clarify, I'm backing up for a minute. We approved the permit, the special permit for one year only. I just want to make sure that we say that because I'm not sure it was clear in the.
One year.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure we were clear. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So.
And Walter, you like that concept?
Yeah, I like the concept and, you know, certainly, you know, just keep us abreast. Anything we could do to help these, these struggling small businesses would, would be a good thing.
So I guess.
Looks like Doug.
Sorry. So I guess a follow-up to that, Ken and Mike, if the governor comes up with something, but it comes up late, our next meeting is May 19th and restaurants are supposed to be open, you know, in this restricted manner on May 20th. Would you pull together a meeting if you need the commission to provide you permission to approve anything or, or based on whatever feedback Ken has from the governor's office? Should we, should we plan on having a meeting in a week on the 12th? Is that enough time?
Well, I think, and, and we can get Ken's point on this too. Wellington is in, you know, the position where we don't have, we don't have dozens of businesses. So it's not as if we're going to be flooded with, with applications. We can probably work with the ones we have and get the health district and fire marshal on board to make sure health and safety are addressed. I think that, you know, if we find that the commission is in the position where it needs to take some type of affirmative action following what Ken learns tomorrow or this week, if we need to get a special meeting together for that purpose, then, then absolutely we'll be asking you to do us a huge favor and clear your schedules for the next couple of weeks so we can do that. But yeah, I mean, my, my point is we've talked with some local health districts. My, my personal focus is we need to do as much as possible to get this, make this easy for the, the restaurants. And, and, and a bit of anecdotal information, we're running a, a business survey for the EDC and across the board, all the Wellington businesses, the overwhelming need, their biggest concern over the next three to six months is making it so they can get back to normal as quickly as possible. That's what they keep saying is their biggest thing. So if this is a one way for us to help, um, you know, we're going to push to do that rapidly if we can.
All right, thank you. Now, item two on the staff report, PZC procedures.
And I'll bid you folks goodnight and hopefully I'll be giving you a good report on the, on the other stuff. Good night, folks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Good night.
Item two, Lori had sent an email after the last meeting or two meetings ago requesting this get added. So I'm going to defer to her.
Um, I know that the state, this is Lori Semperban. I know the state only requires that we put out notices, what is it? Like 24 hours ahead of meetings.
For an agenda?
24 hours.
24 hours.
For an agenda. Okay. I, I would like us as a commission to consider creating our own rule that requires us to get information before that. Especially when we have something like Loves or we have something like the quarry renewal where there's so much information. It is not possible to get things emailed and be able to read through them in 24 hours. I, I think it's, it, we should have five days, you know, like if the previous Thursday, Mike had stuff and we can pick it up from him on Friday or Monday before a Tuesday meeting, I think it's reasonable for us, if, if we want to be making the best decisions we can make, we need more than 24 hours notice to review materials. And so that's what I would like us to consider. Maybe, you know, have a further discussion. I just wanted to bring it up tonight. And just see what other people think, but I, I don't think it's reasonable to get materials the day before. And, and especially when we're doing Zoom meetings, I, I'm somebody that likes to see paper copies and I, I have a hard time trying to navigate things electronically when there are so many of them. And I just, I think we need more notice than that.
I, I agree. Some of these things like, you know, I happened to get through about 95% of what was put out here on, on the quarry and I printed off like some of these items like this. Some of these things are like almost 50 pages long. You know, to scan through and there were several. So, you know, if, if it would be a good practice to get it days ahead of time rather than, and, and this stuff did come out to Mike's credit, he sent it out last week. So we, so we did have.
Right, yeah.
Do it. But, uh, you know, in terms of the first meeting we had, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there really wasn't enough time to do a real thorough review. So you, you do bring up a good point, Lori, about having it five days if possible. You know, not everything's as complex as the next thing. I, you know, I don't want to hold us down on everything, but the complex ones for sure. It's nice for everybody, you know, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of us like asking questions and some people like asking a lot of thoughtful questions and to formulate those questions, it requires reviewing the materials and putting together a list to go by, you know, so you have, and, and to possibly, you know, do some emailing back and forth as well. So, you know, I agree with that.
So something that I would point out is that we have sort of two, two different things here that we're, we're inter, we're going back and forth between. One is when you, when we set an agenda and one is when the commission receives documents. The commission, we can make documents available to you if you want to. It's not been the custom, but if you want us to email documents related to an application as while we live in this virtual world, when we get them, we can absolutely do that. We're not, we are not obligated by some statute that says when I can send you stuff. So I can send stuff to you as soon as it comes in, if that's what you want. The reason we, we, we hold on setting the agenda 24 hours, which is separate is because if you look, we revised the agenda for this meeting because we received two applications for a public hearing. And if I didn't revise the agenda, I would, I would have made them wait two weeks just to get received. So it, I, I'm in between a rock and a hard place because I want to give you everything as much as possible. But I don't want to post things so early that I'm precluded from changing because then applicants end up waiting. So if you're mostly concerned about documents, I can start sending those to you for future applications when we get them if, and then you can say, Mike, I need a hard copy. That's two, two things. So you don't have to be married to both, if that makes sense.
The documents, the documents are more important.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, I think like those two items that were on the agenda today, we didn't need those ahead of time because it was, it was a procedural thing to put it as an, as a public hearing. And, and I agree, it's not necessary to have the exact agenda that far in advance, but any materials, and if you email it and then we ask you for hard copy, we can stop, pick it up or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, Mike, Bob Shabber, I, I, I have to agree. You certainly need some leeway setting the agenda. But when it comes to information that we need to digest, I think if you could get it to us in a more timely manner, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Yep. So we'll, we will start, I mean, these applications loves and that type of thing. Hopefully we don't just have those on our plate all the time, but we'll certainly try to get you documents. I mean, I don't want to send you a hundred emails a day because that's overwhelming and it's hard to find things, but we'll, we'll try to aggregate stuff and, and send stuff to you, you know, when we get it. So you have a better chance to review it. We can do that. That's easy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, one more question. What about access for the public? Because it's also, the public is the same thing. They would like to be able to read materials before 24 hours ahead. But maybe you can make that, you know, if you know something's going to be on the agenda, I'm not sure how to do that to, so I know what you're saying about having the agenda and you put everything out when you do the agenda. But I think the public has a right to see that material beforehand also. And I, so what do you suggest? How could we do that?
Well, it's, 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 it's complicated because the public wants to be involved in applications that the zoning regulations say there's no public involvement in. So it's hard for me to know when people want things ahead of time. If we have a site plan application, there's no, there is no obviously process for them to submit comments or testimony. What I would say is any document that's in the land use office at any point in time is is discoverable. Anybody can ask for it. If, if we know that there's a, an item that's coming before the commission that has significant public interest, you know, you guys can direct me or just give me a heads up and say, hey, I think this needs to go up earlier and we can try to get it on the website ahead of time. I mean, right now, anything that is, any, right now, we are in this weird place where documents that normally would never go before the public have to be posted on the web. So we have to put them on the web now, but when things get back to normal, if there's something that we want to make available, we can talk about, about ways to do that. So that, but anybody can come in and ask for a copy of anything. We, we, we have to give it to them. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think if, if, if as you send it to us, if we say, oh, I think this is something the public is interested in, maybe you can post it on the website. And that would be a way to, you know, give the public some, some access.
Yeah. And I guess, and one of the things that, that like by posting the link on the agenda tonight, today, we have a lot of people that subscribe to the agenda. They get it in like a blast. So when the link goes in the agenda, they get an email so they can, they don't have to do anything. They, the link is, is there for them. They get some type of e-subscription. So for the foreseeable future, any document that the P and Z considers is going to be disseminated everywhere.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we've covered everything. So let's see, it is 9:30 PM, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Bye-bye.